Well, hello everyone. Thank you so much for joining us today. I'm gonna go ahead and get started. So my name is Christopher Robinson. I am a senior planner with the Housing and Community Development Department, also known as HCDD. And I want to welcome everyone to our first Spring Community Meeting for 2022. Thank you all so much for being here with us today. As folks continue to join us in this meeting, I want to highlight a few things for you all. So we have dropped a link in the chat. And that link has a sign-in sheet. So please sign in for us. You can also use this link if you want to sign up to make a public comment. If you are joining us from Facebook or HTV, you can also use this lovely QR code that we have on the screen for you where you can sign in and make a public comment. And when the time presents itself, you can call in and make your public comment or join us on Teams. Your microphones are currently muted, but you do have access to the chat. And so we are asking everyone to please be mindful of what you put in the chat. We want to limit that space for attendees who are answering questions or prompts during this meeting that we have for you all. And HCDD staff will also be posting helpful resources in the chat. And we don't want those messages getting lost amongst other messages as we move along in the meeting. Also, we are recording this meeting. And a video of this presentation will be made available on the housing website and the YouTube channel. So please look out for that. If you want to follow along or review the presentation slides, they're already available for you. You just need to go to the housing website and navigate to the public hearing page. And you can download those slides there. Also, please download the 2022 Annual Action Plan Overview. This document gives some highlights about the draft annual action plan and how to comment. The link is in the chat on where you can actually access this document to download it. This document also has the proposed budgets and the anticipated accomplishments for 2022, which we will review throughout this presentation. So it's a handy guide for you. So right now, we want you guys to engage with us. If you can, tell us what super neighborhood you're joining us from. You can type it in the chat. We'll see it that way. And if you're also here with the organization, please let us know who you are with. We want to see who all is joining us today. Thank you for joining us from the Women's Center, Bethany. Thank you. Fresh Start Mortgage, thank you. Area 51. Thank you so much for joining us. Yes, tell us where you're from. Thank you, guys. I love to see all of these names popping up. We have the Alliance with us. Thank you, Jim, for joining us. Feel free to keep putting that information in the chat as we navigate through our welcome slides. I would love to capture where you all are from. So also, please sign in in the link that's for sign in. I want to cover the agenda with you all briefly. So we are going to have a welcome from Mr. Keith Bynum. He'll give us an opening address. And of course, we'll do a presentation which will cover the grant process, including the development of the 2022 Annual Action Plan and some of the goals that we're hoping to accomplish in the upcoming year. And then after the presentation, we'll have a public comment piece during which we'll get your thoughts and opinions about our proposed programs and our budgets for the 2022 program year. And I hope that the presentation will give you some more insight about the work that we're doing here at HCDD and what's included in the action plan. And so that will help inform your public comment. After that, we'll have a 30-minute breakout group activity. And then we'll reconvene for a brief report out from our facilitators. And then we will reopen the floor for final comments and close out with some final remarks from Mr. Bynum. And right now, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Keith Bynum for our welcome. Sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I want to welcome all of you to our 2022 Spring Community Meeting. And thank you for joining us. As Chris stated, I'm Keith Bynum, the newly appointed director for Housing and Community Development. And the department's mission is to make investments that serve Houstonians' housing needs and build a more equitable city for by creating safe, resilient homes and vibrant, healthy communities where residents can thrive. As we move through this meeting, we will highlight some of the great work that work we plan to accomplish during the following year and present information about services and programs that HCDD currently provides. But ultimately, as we are hosting this meeting to get your input on the draft of 2022 Annual Action Plan, your feedback will be incorporated into the final plan. So please stay engaged, share your thoughts and your opinions. Thank you for participating in today's meeting, and we're excited to hear from you. Now back to Chris, who will introduce our presenters for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Keith. So we're gonna keep moving through this presentation. Here are some of the voices that you're gonna be hearing today. You will hear from Ms. Kimmy Johnson. She will give an overview of our department and the purpose of our Spring Community Meetings. And then I will cover information that is more specific to the 2022 Annual Action Plan. And then I will hand the reins over to Mr. Derek Sellers, who will moderate the public hearing portion. And so at this time, I am going to send things over to Ms. Kimmy Johnson. And just a reminder that you will see some poll questions throughout this event. So please answer those because we want to use that feedback and include it in our action plan. Kimmy, take it away.
Thank you, Kristin. Hello, everyone. My name is Kimmy Johnson. And today, I'm gonna give you a brief overview of the Housing Department, the strategic planning process, and what to expect during these meetings. So let's get started. So at HCDD, we envision a city where everyone has a home where they can afford and a community where they can thrive. And we achieve this vision through several ways. So we provide affordable homes, community and economic development, along with infrastructure and neighborhood and supportive services. And we work towards this mission by implementing strategies that align with these nine goals. We preserve and expand the supply of affordable housing, expand homeownership opportunities, and provide assistance to persons affected by HIV and AIDS. But we also reduce homelessness, improve quality of life, promote health and safety, revitalize communities, foster community economic development, and promote fair housing. And we strive to meet one or more of these goals through programs and services that we provide at HCDD. And we apply for federal grants that help us with this work. And HCDD will receive about $48 million through four federal formula grants from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. These grants are CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, HOME, the Home Investment Partnerships Grant, HOPLA, the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, and ESG, the Emergency Solutions Grant. With CDBG funds, we repair homes, expand homeownership, provide public services, foster economic development, and improve or develop public facilities. We also build or rehabilitate affordable homes for renters and homeowners with home funds. With the HOPLA grant, we provide housing and social services for people with HIV and AIDS and their families. And we also provide shelter and supportive services for people experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness with ESG funds. While other populations may benefit for HCDD programs, HCDD's primary target population are households that are low and moderate income households, and we call them LMI households. A household is considered LMI if they make 80% or less of the area median income. So to the right, we've provided a breakdown of the income by household size for LMI households. So for example, a two-person household would be considered LMI if the household income was $50,700 or less. And a four-person household would be LMI if their income is $63,350 or less. So the map on the left shows areas in Houston that have been designated as low and moderate income areas. So it's important to understand that as we develop the action plan, we are anticipating that our federal grants will benefit LMI populations the most. So in order to receive these formula grants like CDBG and HOME, HUD requires that we submit an annual action plan every year that outlines the activities that we plan to take with about $48 million in federal grants. More specifically, the 2022 Annual Action Plan will set the strategies from July 2022 to June 2023 that will help address Houston's housing and community needs through activities like home repair, public facility improvements, multifamily developments for low and moderate income Houstonians. So let's briefly cover the planning process and why this meeting is so important. So we work through this cycle on an annual basis. And we have already hosted our Fall Community Meetings and developed the Annual Action Plan. And we're currently holding our Spring Community Meetings. So HCDD is nearing the end of its annual strategic planning process. So now we're coming back to you during these community meetings to make sure we got the action plan right. So after making necessary changes based on the comments we receive during the comment period, we will then submit the Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. When we get the plan approved by HUD, then we'll implement these strategies over the course of the next program year, beginning on July 1, 2022. And then we're gonna evaluate the performance based on these goals and budgets that were outlined in the action plan and report information in the CAPR. So these meetings are super important because we want to inform the community, understand community needs, collaborate and create strategies with Houstonians and community partners. But we also want to be accountable to you all. So this meeting is designed to provide a place where we can talk about housing and community needs. And after this presentation, we want to hear from you all about are there any current programs that you would modify? Are there specific areas that could benefit from new community amenities? What kind of new programs would best serve your community or clients? And are there better ways to communicate with residents and stakeholders about HCDD programs and priorities? Ultimately, how can we tailor our work to make a greater impact? But first, tell us why you are here. Do you want to learn more information about HCDD's programs and initiatives? Or do you want to give input about your community's needs? Is there a specific project that you want to support? Or do you want to collaborate on the budget and strategy? Or all of the above? Thank you. And at this time, I will turn it back over to Kristin.
Just bear with us just a moment, guys. I'm trying to get my camera back on. Okay, great. Thank you so much, Kimmy. That was a great overview of the work that we do at HCDD and why these community meetings are so important. And so right now, I'm going to do a little deeper dive. We're going to cover the goals and budgets that are specific to the 2022 Annual Action Plan. So let's start with the estimated budget. So HUD has yet to post its 2022 allocations for all of its participating jurisdictions. So the budgets that you see on this slide and following slides are based on estimated grant awards and program income. And so when HUD finally releases the program year 2022 allocations, the budgets will be updated according to the percentages that are presented on the following budget slides. So the total estimated grant allocation is about $48.3 million. And this will include CDBG, HOME, HOPLA, and ESG. And as Kimmy stated before, the CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant. HOME is for the Home Investment Partnerships Grant. HOPLA is for Housing Opportunities for Persons Living with HIV or AIDS. And ESG is for the Emergency Solutions Grant. And so with program income from CDBG and HOME activities, the total anticipated funding is about $48.6 million. So CDBG, we estimate about $25.1 million. For HOME, we estimate $10.4 million. $10.8 million for HOPLA and $2.1 million for ESG. And again, the following budgets for HCDD are only estimated grant allocations. So let's dig into the actual budgets and goals for each of these grants. So CDBG is probably one of the most versatile grants because we can use these funds to repair homes, expand homeownership, provide public services, foster economic development, and improve or develop public facilities like parks or community centers. So through the $25.1 million of CDBG funding, we have anticipated the following goals for 2022. We would like to provide public services to over 12,000 households, provide public services for about 1,700 households to reduce homelessness, improve at least two public facilities, perform over about 32,000 code enforcement visits, remove lead-based paint hazards from 25 homes, repair or reconstruct 32 homes, provide direct financial assistance to 50 low and moderate income first-time homebuyers, and create or retain about 338 jobs and assist two businesses. So let's look at the budget that we'll use to accomplish all of these activities. So our estimated 2022 allocation for CDBG or the Community Development Block Grant includes $5.2 million allocated to home repair and remediation activities, $5.2 million for public facilities, about $4.2 million for public services together with our ESG match or our Emergency Solutions Grant match. For code enforcement, we will also fund activities totaling about $2.9 million. And for a homebuyer assistance program, we have allocated $1.8 million. We've also allocated about $750,000 to economic development projects that will continue through 2022. And of course, we have to set aside money for our administration costs, which we have estimated at about $5 million. And so again, the total budget for CDBG is $25.1 million. So we use a variety of sources to fund our home repair activities, which includes CDBG, that's the budget that we just looked at. Through this program, we expect to repair about 32 homes to protect homeowners' life, health, and safety. And so the goal is to preserve the supply of affordable housing by repairing these 32 homes with about $5.2 million. And the program gives consideration to seniors over the age of 62, families with children under the age of 18, and persons with disabilities. So if you're a homeowner or you know a homeowner, you may be eligible for our home repair services. So please visit the housing website and complete the home repair program intake application. But right now, we want to take this poll. We want to know from you guys. Would you change the budget to increase the funding for home repair services? Maybe by more than $2 million? Or maybe it's $2 million or less? Or do you think we should actually decrease this budget? Or maybe you think we should keep the budget as is? Tell us what you think here on this poll. Great, I see that almost about 60% of people would like to increase this budget. And it's slightly changing as the responses come in. But majority of you all think we should increase this by a substantial amount. Great, thank you, guys. Please answer that poll because we'll close it probably in a few slides. And we want to capture all of your responses. So in addition to preserving and expanding the supply of affordable homes, HCDD also works to expand homeownership opportunities. And that's the second goal that we covered during the earlier part of this presentation. So homeownership, as we know, is a dream for many Houstonians, but it's out of reach for many residents. And so the city offers up to $30,000 to income-qualified residents that are first-time homebuyers. Like our home repair program, we use several funding sources to fund the homebuyer assistance program. However, we anticipate assisting 50 first-time homebuyers through about $1.8 million using CDBG funds. Again, that's the Community Development Block Grant. And so we want to know from you guys. We're gonna take another poll here. Would you like to increase this budget for our homebuyer assistance program? Would you decrease it? Or would you leave that budget as it is? Tell us what you think. I'll give it a second for the polls to come through. Okay, seeing some interesting choices here. Majority right now are saying that we would increase this budget, though. More than $2 million. Okay, we're gonna keep moving on. But feel free to continue to think about this question. And we'll close that poll again in a few slides. So HCDD also funds the improvement or development of public facilities to revitalize communities. And the Edison Performing Arts Center is one of those developments that uses CDBG funds for the redevelopment of a shopping center in Fort Ben, Houston. So part of this shopping center has already been redeveloped with an affordable housing complex, also known as Edison Lofts, under our Multifamily Program. But this part of the redevelopment is expected to include a performing arts center and after-school program and additional retail space. And you can see that there... See kind of what this looks like? The photo to the right on this slide is what we imagine this would look like. But let's go ahead and take another poll. We want feedback from you guys. So please answer whether or not you would increase our budget for public facilities as a whole. As of right now, we've allocated $5.2 million. And so we want to know if we should increase or decrease that budget or keep it as is. Okay. I'm seeing that, again, majority of you all would like to increase this budget. But some are saying that we should decrease it as well. Thank you, guys, so much for your feedback. And of course, we will incorporate all of this into the action plan. All righty. So we also build or rehabilitate affordable homes for renters and homeowners with our home funds or the Home Investment Partnership Grant. And in 2022, through the $10.4 million that we have estimated for the home grant, HCDD expects to develop about 10 affordable single-family homes, construct 58 new affordable rental homes, and then also provide rental and utility assistance to about 200 persons who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. So again, we've estimated about $10.4 million for this grant. And we have budgeted almost $7.7 million for multifamily rehabilitation developments and $1.7 million for single-family developments. And again, we have estimated about $1.1 million for our planning and administration costs under this grant. So as we've just stated, we build and rehabilitate multifamily rental units. And so this is one of the ways that we achieve our goal of preserving and expanding the supply of affordable homes. And Sunrise Lofts is a great example of one of those projects that HCDD has funded. And it is a new multifamily construction project that will use home funds. And this facility will offer about 89 units through permanent supportive housing for young adults who are at risk of homelessness. And this development will have onsite supportive services and activities like vocational and job training, childcare, mental health services, and other supportive services. And this development will also be near Discovery Green and the St. Joseph Medical Center. And we expect it to complete by August of 2023. So let's do another poll. So we've allocated about $1.7 million to our single-family housing development program. But we want to know, and also $7.7 million for multifamily. So we want to know, should we use home funding to prioritize low and moderate-income renters or homeowners? Tell us what your preference is here. I'll give it a few minutes, or a few seconds, rather, to get your responses. Right now, we have 11% prioritizing renters. And 75, actually, it's changing. 75% are saying we should prioritize homeowners. Thank you, guys. Feel free to continue to answer in the chat if you can't access the poll or answer this question using the poll that we have. We'll leave that open for a few slides for you guys. So with the HOPLA grant or the Housing for Persons Living with HIV or AIDS grant, we assist families that does just that. We service people living with HIV or AIDS and their families. And so services through HOPLA funding are geared towards helping Houstonians or households for persons living with HIV or AIDS. And in 2022, HCDD anticipates assisting over 1,800 households with its HOPLA funding through rental assistance, short-term rental mortgage and utility subsidies, permanent or transitional shelter facilities, and also wraparound or supportive services. So for the HOPLA grant, excuse me, we have estimated receiving $10.8 million. And we've budgeted $4.8 million each for tenant base... Excuse me, $4.8 million for rental assistance, $2.5 million for supportive services, $1.5 million for short-term rent, mortgage, and utility subsidies. You may also hear that called strum you. We've also set aside $1 million for operating costs, $65,000 for resource identification. And we also budgeted about $1 million for our administration costs. So let's take another poll. Help us answer this question. Would you increase the budget for any of the following HOPLA activities? Maybe you would like to see us fund more rental assistance. Maybe you think we should fund more supportive services. Maybe we should take care of operating costs and resource identification. Let us know what you think with this poll. And again, if you don't have access to the poll, feel free to enter this information in the chat. I see a large response for rental assistance and also other subsidies like mortgage and utility subsidies. Thank you all. Mark, I see that you like the current budget. And thank you. Thank you so much for answering that. Okay, so let's highlight Avenue 360 Health and Wellness. This is one of the initiatives that we will use or support in PY 2022. And this facility will assist 383 families or individuals who have been affected by HIV or AIDS. And so we will do this by supporting rental assistance, mortgage and utility assistance, and supportive services. And so we anticipate funding this initiative with about $3 million through our HOPLA grant. So if you or someone you know could benefit from these services, please visit one of their many locations, this main campus. Or the main campus is located in the Heights. But there are centers all over. And so the building that you actually see on the screen is one that we helped to develop last year. And it is located in Midtown. So again, the Emergency Solutions Grant, also known as ESG, is used to provide shelter and supportive services for people experiencing homelessness or those at risk of homelessness. And through this ESG funding in 2022, we expect to assist over 1,000 persons and 85 households through rent, utilities, relocation, and stabilization services. And also with wraparound, excuse me, rapid rehousings, which is similar to the services under the HOPLA grant. But this is not geared towards persons living with HIV or AIDS. It is more specific for persons who are at risk of homelessness or already experiencing homelessness. And then, of course, we will fund operations for emergency shelters. So for our ESG grant, we've estimated about $2.1 million. And we've budgeted approximately $1 million for emergency shelters, over $500,000 for rapid rehousing, about or over $362,000 for homeless prevention, $85,000 for HMIS, which is the Homeless Management and Information System, and over $100,000 for administration costs. So let's take our last poll for this section. If you could, tell us what you would change about this budget for ESG. Would you increase or decrease any of these options here? Would you increase uh or decrease any of these options uh here? Uh maybe you want to see an increase in emergency shelter or maybe a decrease. Um maybe, you know, you want to see more resources sources put towards H M I S. Tell us what you think here. Great. And again, feel free to put this information in the chat if you cannot access the poll. Thank you, guys. Okay, increase rapid rehousing and definitely an increase in homeless prevention. Thank you, guys, for responding to that. And again, we'll incorporate this information into the final twenty twenty two annual action plan. And so what do we need from you? Right now, we want to hear from you all. Uh tell us about the projects and activities that you think would best benefit families and individuals. Um we want to tailor our our programs and our messaging to assist residents better. What kinds of programs would best service your community or clients? Are there specific areas that could um benefit from new community amenities, maybe? Um are there any current programs that you would like to modify? Or maybe there are better ways for us to communicate with our community partners and leaders or the residents in Houston? We want to hear from you guys. So now we are going to transition into our public hearing portion of this meeting. Um we want to get your input on the twenty twenty two annual action plan. But ultimately, tell us how we can help um you better your home or your neighborhoods or the work that you're doing related to housing and community development. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Derek Sellers for the public comment portion of this meeting.
Good afternoon. So it's time for the beginning of that public hearing portion of the agenda. This is your opportunity to provide us your public comments, and we definitely want to hear from you. If you want to make a public comment, please join us online via the ways that are currently being shown on the screen. And there's also call in numbers in both English and Spanish as a means to make your comment. So although the normal process of doing this in person has been amended because we're doing this virtually, we still have some ground rules here that we adhere to. Each speaker is going to be given three minutes to provide their testimony. Uh there's no yielding to another person. Um we'll do calls uh in the in the order that they are received or notified via the chat, and I'll give you some information on how to do that. Uh I do want to note, though, that this testimony is being recorded and transcribed. This is not a Q and A session. This is your comments on what you heard tonight or what you think we should be doing with these funds as they were described uh earlier in the presentation. Summaries of these responses will be included as part of our final action plan submission to HUD. Um so uh keep that in mind. So as we go through, we will unmute you when your name is called uh to make a public comment. We ask that you co- that each commenter states your name for the record and give a public comment about the draft twenty twenty two annual action plan. Uh to begin, we'll start with those that have uh raised their hands in the chat um and go down through that direction. And after we get through all of those, uh then we'll uh pivot to those that may be uh calling in. And then uh we'll give, I'll give some direction around how that process will work. So let's start with those that have made um that have raised their hands in the chat and uh we'll go from there. When I call your name, please uh, you know, state your name for the record. Um and then um you may begin your your public comment. You'll have three minutes to make it. You'll see some prompts along the way to help you out. So first up, let's start with Randall Baxley. If you could unmute yourself.
Okay, yes, I am Randall Baxley. And um I'm sixty nine years old. And I had um repaired my home after Yuri uh with piping and uh Connective, did a Connective uh grant or Connective reimbursed me for the piping that I had done. It's great to have that done. Uh there was an interest from me to the Tejano Center that uh they referred me to to uh have the piping underneath um made made uh to to insulate it. And uh they said, and the Tejano Center said they didn't do that. So I said, that's great, and I thought, I'm just going on my way. Then Habitat called and came through and did a complete sort of walkthrough on the house. Had a bunch of things they wanted to do but did not have funding. And so the funding was enough to do a bathroom, but I would have to move out of the house for maybe a month. And so they're about to work. This was just today that we figured out that there that they might be a month in here for some reason. Uh and and that during that time, the water would be turned off. So uh we could not afford that, and so they're going to get back with us on that. And and then there's a S B P or something that's wants to do something. But anyway, all of this requires going back and redoing all the paperwork that I did with Connective. So it's just that and then y'all have this program that you, the first program you mentioned, that does similar things. And it would just be great if somehow if I had one set of places places to put request. And then after that, the different places were able to accept the documentation from the first one. So and I'm I'm always glad for anything I get. Uh if if it's going to take a month, then I'm not going to be able to do that. And but but we're going to figure this out. And uh we've enjoyed, we look at our hu- I look at our house as a tent. And the tent allows me to be covered from the rain and so forth. But uh that's about it for the moment, and this needs to be better if we're going to be here for another thirty years. So, thank you.
Uh thank you for your comment, Mr. Baxley. Um Christine?
Hello, I'm Christine Holland. Hopefully, I've successfully unmuted myself.
Yeah.
Great, so uh for for quite a few years, the City of Houston Housing Department had a program called Minor Critical Emergency Home Repair. And rebuilding together, the organization of which I am the CEO, did the majority of those repairs. And I am concerned, I'm very concerned for our Houston homeowners because thirty two houses worth of repairs. These are in-depth repairs, and we are fortunate enough to be on the grant uh and be able to bid on these projects, and we appreciate that. However, there are hundreds and hundreds of homeowners in Houston that need smaller repairs that used to be addressed under this other program. Blue tarps from I C were the primary repairs that were funded through the Minor Critical Emergency Home Repair Program. I I appreciate working with the city. I appreciate uh Director Bynum. I I just feel that there is no avenue for folks who need a minor repair. And that is of of deep concern to me because I'm the organization, we are the organization on the two one one hotline that is supposed to do home repair. We repaired four hundred and thirty three houses last year. And we turned away a thousand easily. So my request is that consideration be given to doing some smaller repairs as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. Uh Ian Chacon, if you'll unmute unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. All right, we'll come back to you. Uh Mark Smith?
Hi, great, thank you. Uh my name is Mark Smith. I'm a resident of the City of Houston. Um and I want to thank H C uh D D for this plan and presentation. Um I'm also an employee of the Coalition for the Homeless here of Houston and Harris County. And so I just want to say thank you for the focus here uh through this plan and through these resources on assisting in addressing homelessness throughout our city. Um and the many ways that the city works with various homeless service providers and coalition uh across the board to ensure that people who become homeless have an opportunity uh to get back into housing. Um I also appreciate the investment here in not just homeless services, but affordable housing and housing that can assist people who have become homeless. Um I am concerned that with the rise in cost of housing across the City of Houston that we've experienced over the last two years, uh that we need to have concerted and focused efforts to expand affordable housing, um maintain existing affordable housing stock, and ensure that the lowest income and most vulnerable uh residents of our city have the ability to live and thrive here just as much as everyone else. Um so I just want to say thank you for that focus here. I hope that this can be part of a bigger push to ensure that we have sufficient affordable and supportive housing for our residents in need a- and uh appreciate the investment by H C D here and everyone involved to continue that work.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Um Joe Hawkins?
Hello, my name is Joe Mitra. Joe is so much easier to remember, Hawkins. I am the Resilience and Equity um Officer for the COVID Division of the Harris County Public Health Services. Um I'm also a concerned resident of District K. Um there are some streets and sidewalks that we feel need to be replaced, um and not just repaired, but replaced. Um a lot of times, we have um the city come in and they just put patches of tar into the street that further damage other people's cars. Um and also, our sidewalks are not um as stable as they should. Most of these sidewalks in our community, which is Quail Glen, um have been there for over fifty, sixty, seventy years. So we want to be able to advocate for more sidewalks. So we do have a lot of disabled as well as elderly people in our our neighborhoods, and they can't get into their wheelchairs or use their walkers on those sidewalks um and get physical activity. So as we think about social determinants of health and things that are affecting us outside of our physical health, um we really need support in making sure that our streets and our sidewalks are feasible for those that need to get physical activity or just walk outside to get a fresh uh breath of air. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh Letitia Evans, I noticed you put a comment in the chat. Wasn't sure if you would like to make any additional public comment.
Okay, hi.
Hi.
Yes. I was hoping that the comment in the chat would suffice. But I I do agree with everybody regarding those uh those additional improvements as far as with affordable housing and everything of that nature. But I also want to include things of like increased adult literacy programs and workforce development because all those things tie together. Because if we increase the literacy of our adults and give them the tools to make better career decisions and train them up, then eventually we'll free up some affordable housing for folks who additionally needs those types of supportive systems. So I just don't want to also get in on a ground level, but also think long term strategic planning as far as how do we get those folks off uh affordable housing into homeownership? And we do those things by increasing their literacy and their earning capacity. Thank you for the opportunity.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Amy Corin?
Hi, uh my name's Amy Corin, and I work here in the near north side of Houston um at at Wesley Community Center, and I'm a City of Houston resident as well. And thank you for the opportunity um to provide input on your plan. Um I wanted to make a pitch for capacity for facilities in in which uh people can get training um and workshops and education that they need to improve their incomes. Um at Wesley Community Center, we see a lot of, we've been here since nineteen oh four. We see a lot of lower income families and individuals who are struggling to make ends meet make ends meet on a regular basis. And a lot of them are looking for life-changing uh training that can catapult them into a better career um that can improve their wages and help them achieve financial stability, which they then pass on to to um um future generations. Um we are, we specifically see in the near north side a lot of gentrification and and land prices going up. And so would really advocate for more public facilities funding um for organizations working in this area to be able to provide services to people in need here. Um especially services um like job training um that help people increase their income and and stability.
All right, thank you. Um Michael Knight?
Yes, this is Michael Knight. Thank you very much. Um I am a native of Houston. I am also a principal with Better World Properties. We provide uh uh or operate apartments for thousands of Houstonians all over the city. Uh really appreciate the efforts of H C D D and what you guys are doing. But we also know that the amounts of money that we're talking about are really just a spit in the ocean. Um so my comment would be that anything we can find or any ways that we can find to use this limited amount of money more efficiently, um I think will be helpful to us. Uh and much of that efficiency, in our opinion, comes from uh helping to develop leaders and programs and what have you as opposed to just direct assistance. Our uh experience with uh some of the types of uh funds and and uh assistance that that we're talking about here uh has been a little different. Um over the past year during the pandemic, uh we have worked with the Coalition for the Homeless to uh uh provide housing for a number of people that were at risk of homelessness. Uh this was a very generous program that the, you know, funded with federal dollars. Uh so we were able to help ninety nine different families get into a home. The the uh the way that program was originally set up, though, was that they were going to get counseling. We're going to help them get back on their feet and get them started with a new life. After one year into that program, uh two people that we know of have gotten jobs. Out of a close to a hundred, we know of two that have gotten actual jobs. So not very efficient. We also know that uh when we're talking about the low income people, uh eighty percent of A M I in Harris County is still a very big number. A M I is so large in Harris County that eighty percent puts people uh i- i- it it it's a huge number of people. So I would really encourage you to think about A M I at a a lower percentage when you're trying to figure out who to help. Uh we also uh had some experience with uh uh improvement funds that were provided uh through, again, federal government through the the uh General Land Office. Uh and some of that was distributed to people that were fixing up things like apartments. We know of a hundred unit apartment complex where they put fifty three thousand dollars per door into fixing up a property that was only twenty years old. It was a ridiculous amount of money. Um so just ways to find or find ways to be more efficient with these limited funds uh will help our community a great deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Uh Ms. Gladys Howse L. Ms. Gladys, you want to unmute yourself? Okay, uh I'll come back to Ian Chacon. I wasn't, I noticed that you had too had put a comment into the chat. I wasn't sure if that meant that you wanted to um uh make a public comment or a stated comment beyond that. All right, uh here and no one else. Um do one more last call for those that are currently online with us. Um if you'd like to make a comment, now's your time. Just uh raise your hand or put your name into the chat. Um and we'll we'll call on you. So we'll give a a couple of seconds here to see if we have any other takers. Um Samantha Sherman?
Hi, thank you um uh for giving me a moment to speak. Um I wanted to talk a little bit of, speak a little to the opportunity to help residents gain skills. I live in the City of Houston, and I work in the City of Houston, and I just see a lot of need to help our adults continue to be able to build skills, literacy skills, workforce skills, training skills. Um a lot of the folks that I encounter in my work, they they need that. Um they want to build careers, they want to own homes, but they're not in a position right now to do that. They don't have the skills to go get the jobs to to really build assets. Um and that's what they all want. And so I'd like to um to put in a plug for that sort of, the funding to go in that direction to really help the adults in the city to build the skills so they can build their careers, they can build assets. Um a- and they can live and grow in the communities that we have in Houston that are just amazing places to be and to live and to raise families. And they want to be able to own homes in those same neighborhoods um and to build careers in those same neighborhoods.
All right, anyone else uh that we currently have online? All right, so seeing none, I guess we'll turn it over this time to those that may have called in. Um and so if you are on a phone line at the moment and would like to make a public comment, uh I believe the command is to press star six to unmute yourself and then say your name and before giving your comments. All right, so that wraps up this portion of the presentation. So we'll hand it back over to Chris uh to talk about our next activity. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Deputy Director Derek Sellers. Thank you to everyone who gave your public comments. I'm so glad that we opened up the floor for that, and I'm very grateful for your your thoughts and opinions. For now, we are going to attempt to break out into small group activities. We're gonna talk a little bit more. Hopefully, we can get a conversation going here. We want to hear from all of you. We are going to have discussion that's facilitated by our H C D D staff members. And so we'll have about twenty-five to thirty minutes for this exercise. So bear with me right now as I prepare to move you all into your groups. Within the next ten to fifteen seconds, you should be moved. For anyone who is on the telephone, you will stay in the main room. We won't be able to transition you into a breakout group, a separate breakout group, but you will be able to talk to a facilitator in the main room here. So again, bear with me for about ten to fifteen seconds as we transition. Okay, we should have most everyone back. So I am going to start with our our group who is in the main room. If you can, give us a a brief recap on what was discussed in your breakout groups. Maybe thirty seconds to a minute, if you can do that. Megan or Mary?
Hi, this is Mary, and we, Megan was our leader in discussion today. We discussed, let me get my notes together. We discussed the need for historic preservation and maybe tying that to low and moderate-income homes. And and we also discussed need for community centers in places like Freedmenstown. We also discussed kind of maker spaces and the need for maker spaces, not just in one part of town, but in multiple communities across the City of Houston that are easy to get to. And we also discussed the need for home repairs for seniors, people over the age of sixty-five, especially in the near north side and Fifth Ward. Those were a lot of, I think, the the main topics that we hit in the first question.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm going to go to Kimmy and Yolanda's group. Do you guys have any notes that you want to share from your group?
Hi, sure. So I'd say for question two was, how can we better address these concerns through our existing programs? So in our group, we discussed, we talked about how Houston, you know, has historically been affordable and accessible for quality housing, but just kind of over the last two years, we're at risk of losing that affordability. And so it came up that, excuse me, we, in order to ensure that we should be able to expand affordability with for many of our residents who can't afford it here anymore. And so to do so, excuse me. Yeah, so in order to do so, we need to possibly educate some of our, some of the residents and inform them about some of the like credit and some of those things. So, yes. Also, another concern was the long kind of wait time between planning and getting the the funds that the city gets to to the residents. So they're interested in finding a way to accelerate the process, whether it be technology or some ways that the city can work together with organizations to kind of get the resources out.
Interesting, okay, thank you. Now, Dan and Jess, do you guys have a quick recap of what was discussed in your group?
We sure do. Yes, our group, probably two major themes popped up. The first was an identified need for finding better ways to engage with the community. Things like having a presence at already existing events, things like the rodeo, parades, things like that to seek community input there where people already are. Another identified need was kind of reemphasizing, this was identified in the public hearing beforehand that was handled by Mr. Sellers. But the need for a program which handles kind of the smaller repairs, the stuff that builds up over time. One participant identified that, you know, she has a a crack in her ceiling because of the freeze that happened last February. And, you know, that's not something that a a whole home tear down is super necessary. But a a program that would address concerns like that appeared to be welcome to the community insofar as was in my breakout room. Jess, do you have anything else outside of those two items?
Yeah, just additionally, I think the the emphasis on how rapid rehousing is necessary and just as much outreach that that we can do to to let folks know about the the services that we provide in a timely manner.
Yes.
Good, yeah. Totally understand that. Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate your help. Thank you for reporting out. And thank you to everybody who stuck around for our breakout group. At this time, I want to open the floor to any of our attendees that may want to give a public comment. I want to open the floor specifically to Ms. Gladys House L. Ma'am, would you like to unmute your mic and and give a public comment, if you wish? Okay, if there's anyone else who would like to give a public comment, we, of course, will catalog this. You can speak now, forever hold your peace. And if not, here are some other ways that you can actually give a comment. We will close the this public comment period on April tenth for the draft twenty-twenty-two annual action plan. But you can still comment online until then. You can also email us at hcdplanning@houstontx.gov. You can mail a written comment to us. That that mailing address is on the screen. We are at twenty-one hundred Travis Street on the ninth floor, Houston, Texas, zip code seven-seven-zero-zero-two. And you can also give us a call and leave a voicemail. That number is eight-three-two-three-nine-four-fifty-four-hundred. Please don't forget that we would love your input. For anyone that left a comment in the chat, if you would like to amend those those chat messages and actually formalize them in a written comment here, these are the ways that you can do that. But right now, I'm going to turn things over to our director, Mr. Keith Bynum, for some final comments. Sir, would you like to add anything to today's meeting? Deputy Director Derek Sellers, is there anything that you would like to add?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody that joined us this afternoon, taking some time out to learn more about what we do and these grants and what our intent is for the programs and and the projects behind it. We actually, we take that into account as we develop these plans. It means a lot to us for you to join us and to get that feedback. I also want to thank the department staff involved in putting this together. It takes a lot of work to put these hearings together, especially in this virtual format. And so thank you to the team for getting that done and and rolling this out for everybody to be able to participate. We're always looking at ways to improve these events. So just as we've asked for comments on this action plan, before we submit it, we always welcome your comments on the means that we're delivering this information, what you think about the presentation and the breakout discussions. So we look forward to hearing from you soon. Getting your comments on this draft plan. Also, just want to note that maybe something didn't come to you today. We're doing this again next week. I know Chris will go through that, but we'll be doing it again next week. Tell your friends, tell your family. We want to hear from everybody. So thank you and good afternoon to everybody.
Um.
Thank you, have a good one.
Um, please go ahead if you'd like to speak now.
Are you referring to me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. I I'll just echo everything that Derek said. Yes, thank you for participating. Your participation is greatly valued. We will take to heart everything that was asked and and your input. So we do really appreciate it. And as he said, we will be doing this again next week. So if you would like to participate again, you're welcome. Or pass it on to someone else who didn't have an opportunity to participate today. And as always, want to always thank the staff who works very hard and diligently to put this event on. It's quite, it's quite an undertaking to to do this event. So want to thank them as well. And thank you for for participating again. Please have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much, both of you. And thank you both for showing up and being a part of this conversation. Before we close out, to everyone, I want to give you some resources. I want to leave you with just a few nuggets. So every Wednesday, H C D D hosts our virtual community office hours from one to four P M. You can call in to be connected to a program representative, and they're available to answer questions, give you status updates, and just tell you about our programs here at H C D D. So if you would like, give us a call on our main line. It's eight-three-two-three-nine-four-sixty-two-hundred. We also have our three-sixty Road to Home Ownership Series, which gives great information to help prepare first-time homebuyers, especially with understanding the importance of building healthy credit and presenting real expectations after homeownership, like how to maintain your home or what aftercare looks like. And so we've already hosted two sessions, but we will be coming back for three more. And the next session will feature a a guest speaker from the Harris County Appraisal District who will be discussing how to prepare for financial responsibilities of homeownership. And these sessions that we're talking about right now are all free, and so I encourage you to attend them. H C D D also hosts a monthly Housing Advocates Collective Meeting. It is an open meeting for any nonprofit working on housing and disaster recovery-related issues. The meeting is held every third Thursday, so please join us at the next meeting. I think it's gonna be April twenty-first, but if not, please check our website for the updated date. We also have the Harvey Home Buyer Assistance Program, which is offering virtual information sessions for first-time homebuyers in Houston. And of course, we're offering up to thirty thousand dollars, as we said earlier in this presentation, for down payment assistance, and those are held at least once a month. We are also hosting Lunch and Learns, and these will not only give an overview of the department, but also focus on one topic or program each session, and they're normally held on the third Friday of each month. And now to the screen that is, or the slide that's on the screen right now. We have Fair Housing Month coming up. It will start tomorrow, and we're gonna kick it off with some great events. We'll host a fair housing workshop for landlords and property managers on April fifth, and the second workshop will be on April twenty-eighth. So if you fit into this category of landlord or property manager, please register and attend and attend these events. You'll get some great information from our guest speakers and our Fair Housing Coordinator, Kimmy Johnson. Also, we will host a grant introduction workshop for the Fair Housing and Hurricane Season Preparedness Outreach Grant on April seventh. And we'll have two Fair Housing one-on-one workshops. This program supports community advocates with outreach as it relates to fair housing and hurricane preparedness. So if you are interested in this program, please visit the website. The link is on the screen. And you can use that link to access the information or register for these events. And as Director Bynum and Deputy Director Sellers also mentioned earlier, we want to remind you that we will be meeting back in the same space on April sixth at six P M. So please spread the word or join us again if you want to continue this conversation. We love to hear what you guys all have to say about the work that we'll be doing in the upcoming year. And again, please don't forget to comment, make a written comment, or you can call us and leave a voicemail. These options, you can find, excuse me, you can find this information on how to comment online, even if you don't find this or have a screenshot of this when you leave this meeting. Just go online and you can grab that information and leave a comment. And finally, tell us how you would rate this meeting. I hope we get four or five stars from you guys. If you have any ideas on improvements, please include those in your public comments, too. And we want to thank you. If you haven't already, please follow us on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, or any of our other platforms to stay connected. Sign up for our newsletter so that you can stay engaged and receive the latest news about what H C D D is doing. And with that, I want to thank you all so much and have a great day, and I hope to see you guys soon. Thank you. Bye-bye.